I don't go over this. Do you like, fellas, regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order? Can we have roll call, please, then?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Present.
Mayor Protam Schuster. Commissioner Chavez.
President.
Commissioner Jacomo.
President.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
President.
Y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming out tonight and those joining us online. Couple of announcements. All city offices will be closed November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. All city offices will be closed November 24th and 25th in observance of Thanksgiving. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 22nd at 6:00 PM. This time, we will entertain any items from citizens present, and seeing none in the audience, we will move on to the action items. Item 6A, deliberate act on through of October 25th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Should have had a chance to go over the minutes in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as recorded. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hi, Lindy.
Howie.
Item B, deliberate act on event form Rattone Main Street's festival of lights static parade on historic First Street, November 25th. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioners, in your packet, you have the permit checklist on the Christmas static parade on First Street, scheduled to be held on Christmas, nope, I'm sorry, Almost made a bad mistake there. At, from 5:00 PM till 10:00 PM. Here to give you all the details is the president of Rattone Main Street, Christine Valentini. You will see that staff has reviewed the form, street, there is street closures involved. They have, they are very familiar with the event and have approved their, their assignments on the event.
Chris?
Mayor, Commissioners. Yep, Rattone Main Street is excited to be bringing back our annual Festival of Lights Static Parade. So, we're hoping to get a lot of floats, everybody. And so, we're, we are planning it, of course, on November 25th. This is the Friday right after Thanksgiving, and the reason we've decided to do it on that Friday evening is so that we don't, in a, sad, I guess, in Trinidad on Saturday, they have their parade, so, in hopes of getting more participation here, we hope to have the Festival of Lights all take place on Historic First Street, from the avenues of Rio Ground to Clark Avenue. We're hoping to get all of that area filled with floats, and we're also hoping that we can do this in conjunction with the lighting of the Christmas tree. So, we light the Christmas tree here at Ripley Park at 5:00, and then everybody can just walk on down to First Street and check out all the floats. We will also have the, um, God, my, my mind is going blank here. Besides the Festival of Lights, we're going to have the, help me out here, the, Atwaters. My mind is...
Buscarini's.
I mean, the Buscarini's, we're giving it anyway. Yeah, I'm really...
The Winter Wonderland.
I don't know why that, why it's just like gotten away from me, but it's, we will have the Winter Wonderland going in the Coors building.
Now I feel better about what I said.
Yes. Oh, my gosh. We're also gonna hopefully have some entertainment for the kids, and we'll also have, hopefully if everybody comes through with the plans, that we'll also have some carolers walking around, entertainment, games for the kids, all that good stuff. And it will be from 5:00 PM and will go until 8:00 PM.
Cool. Speaking of the tree lighting, Michael and I, Michael and I were talking, who coordinates that? The last couple of few years, it's kind of been a mess.
Really? Well, you guys do, I don't know.
Well, I spoke with Dave Piancino, and we discussed with Scott as well, that we were gonna think that 4:40 would be a good time to light the tree, because Clint Henson also wanted to have some of the band from the school play some Christmas carols as well. So, that's the time that we decided. I was gonna get back with Dave on that, but he wasn't really sure either. He said that the tree got lit last year and then turned off and then lit again.
Well, yeah, last year, we set up, asked all the commissioners to be there, and we got there and it was already lit.
Oh. Well, you, yeah, I thought our PS coordinated it, but depending on, depending on him.
I told him that we would let him know, and then when we discussed it in the office, we decided that 4:40 would work, and I didn't call him back. He was a little under the weather, but I think that's what time we were gonna go with.
Yeah, and last year, Master, the Main Street volunteers were on first lining floats up, so we set up the barricades, and then we bring in the floats and line them all up and get everything ready at Winter Wonderland. So, hopefully, we'll get that all coordinated together.
Well, we can all work together and see what we can do.
Just let us know.
Alrighty. Thanks, Chris.
I'll make a motion to approve the Main Street Festival of Lights.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the Rattone Main Street's Festival of Lights on Historic First Street, November 25th. Is there any further discussion?
You know, last year, it was a pretty good job by the Commissioners that lit the tree, just 'cause Mr. Jacomo and myself couldn't find the light switch.
Well, that's right.
And then everybody made fun.
Nobody said it wasn't a bad job, wasn't a good job, Mr. Barry.
Not supposed to use names either.
Oh.
No, it didn't mention any names.
Well, okay, it wasn't me, it was Ja.
Alright. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, discussion, 2023 Legislative Capital Alley Priorities, Mr. Barry.
Mayor, Commissioner, I have given you a memorandum, actually, the same memo that you had at the last meeting when we began our conversation about capital outlay requests that would be submitted for the regular 2023 session of the New Mexico Legislature. Last meeting, we said that the regular session would convene on January 17th, 2023. It's a 60-day session, and then it would end on March 18th. So, we did talk to the governor at Kearney School some time back, and she reminded us that there's quite a bit of, of capital outlay funding potentially out there, and I have put together some recommendations for you in the memo based on information that we have. I'll go down there real quickly, but I would comment on the memo that this is submitted to you to initiate the conversation. The Commission will have the discretion to establish priorities for capital outlay requests. You can amend any of the projects, you can amend any of the recommended amounts that you see in here. We, we would anticipate taking some action on this from having the priorities established by the Commission at the next meeting, and then begin to submit these requests to legislative services. I've listed Maloya Dam safety improvements. I've listed an amount of $30 million. This would have to do with spillway improvements. It's something that we've performed a lot of engineering on in the last three or four years. A big-ticket item, obviously, something we've worked with Dam Safety Bureau, and we've used the engineering firm AECom to develop estimates on this. So, we have listed this on our ICIP as our top priority, and I have reflected that in the memorandum. I've listed acquisition of Bartlett Mesa Ranch. That's an, that's something that we've talked about now for an extended period of time, and I have placed the amount of $1,500,000 as a request for capital outlay to go to the Legislature. That amount would actually complete acquisition, and it would provide some funding for planning and development of the, of the, the 2,224-acre acquisition. Number three, Kearney School, turning film production and workforce training facility. The mayor and I met with representatives of Rattone, El Rattone Media Group this weekend. We looked at some revised estimates, if we were really going to construct the type of extended reality studio that we envisioned, that it really does not exist in New Mexico currently, and I've listed an amount of $10 million as the request to go to the Legislature for that item. I would, that would include renovation of the existing building, construction of a new building for the XR Studio, and specialized equipment that would be used for the XR Studio. List public works, equipment replacement, a number of items that we would like to upgrade our public works capability out there. I'll put an amount of half a million dollars in there. You've seen a lot of activity in the last couple of weeks from the Public Works Department. We're getting ready for next year's street improvement program, so you see a lot of streets that have been under-maintained are, are getting some repairs now. That is in preparation for our, our street surfacing project for next year, something that we had talked about, approximately eight miles of city streets would be resurfaced by the chip seal method. So, they've been very active, getting a lot done, and you, you see a number of pieces of equipment that we would like to upgrade or add to the Public Works Department. I've listed civic plaza construction, again, something we've talked about for a while now. This is in regard to the half a block that the city owns that was the site of the El Portal Hotel. I've put an amount of $500,000 in there for a request to the Legislature. We would anticipate that we would design something that, that would be a, a center of attention for downtown, continue our downtown revitalization efforts, and be beneficial to our tourism-related efforts as well. We have no, we, we haven't completed the design at this point. We've got a lot of public input and ideas on what might go there, but we would have to refine that. We do have $25,000 in hand. We would anticipate bringing a grant agreement to the Commission at the next meeting, and that could be the money we use for planning, or we could use it for some implementation. And then finally, I've listed drainage system improvements and reconstruction, something that over the years, we've talked about extensively. We do have an antiquated storm drainage system, especially in downtown area of Rattone. I would request another half a million dollars for drainage system improvements. Over the years, we've chipped away at this item and done some improvements, but we've got a ways to go, and you don't have to be an engineer to go around town and see the need for improvements to the drainage system. So, that's the memorandum I've provided to you, again, just to try to get the conversation going. This does track with the infrastructure capital improvement plan that the Commission approved back in August, I believe, and that's one thing the Legislature will do, is look at the ICIP, look at the rankings that you assigned and the priorities you assigned there, and we try to, we try to coordinate that fairly closely.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Barry. We looked at the list, that's roughly about $43 million worth of requests here. Helping requests, so it'd be nice if we got some of that funded. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Barry? Alrighty, moving on. Item G, introduction of ordinance, adopting a supplement to ordinance 940 for the city of Rattone, New Mexico, and declaring any emergency. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I would turn this over to Michael Ann Antinucci, the city clerk. Generally, this ordinance has to do with codification of the code ordinances of Rattone.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. As City Manager Barry said, this is a codification of several ordinances that we passed during the past year. Those ordinances were for the financing for the Simron system. We also had two water ordinances for the water and sewer rates, and then I think one of them was, had to deal with rates during times of shortage. And then we also recently updated the vacant building fees. So, all of those ordinances are now online. Everything's been codified. We just received the supplement pages, and we'll be putting those in, in all of the actual physical books. So, we bring this to you this evening for introduction only, since it is an ordinance, we'll go ahead and advertise it as a legal in the newspaper, and then bring it back to you probably at the first meeting in December.
Alright, thank you. Any questions, comments for Michael? Just to remind everybody, this is an introduction of an ordinance, and action will be taken on a regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance, adopting a supplement to ordinance 940 for the city of Rattone, New Mexico, and declaring the emergency.
A second.
Of a motion and a second to, to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I've been asked that item E be postponed, so I would entertain a motion to postpone item E.
A second.
A second.
A motion and a second, postpone item E, that is, deliberate act on resolution 2022-53, authorizing the certification of the city of Rattone capital asset inventory. Do we want to postpone that to the next meeting?
Yes, I think we would bring it back at our next meeting.
Yes.
If I could get your motion amended to the next...
Amended to the next meeting?
Alrighty. And we have motion and a second to postpone till our next meeting. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate act on 2023 Ports to Plains Alliance Annual Membership Dues. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I have brought you an application for membership in the Ports to Plains Alliance, where the city of Rattone would not only be a member, but they would have a seat on the, on the directing board, and I think it's timely that we consider submitting the application and becoming a dues-paying member of Ports to Plains. Of course, there is an annual expense to this membership. It is a formula that's based on population according to the census. They have given me a number of $3,685 and 1 cent would be the annual dues for Rattone. I bring this to the Commission because I think that it is timely, it's, it would be good if Rattone applied to this, to be a member of the Alliance. I think the Ports to Plains Alliance has really come through on things that we're concerned about, namely, the Interstate 27 effort. They were, they were, of course, very active, critical in pushing that through. A lot of that in the federal legislation was due to the efforts of Texas legislators, but in the federal legislation, it specifically states that I-27 would come to Rattone, New Mexico, Laredo, Texas, to, to Rattone. Some of the points that they would, they asked me to bring up with you is, are the following. The city gains the voice of a large transportation advocacy group that is well-established for over 24 years. The influence of this group was successful in the four-lane expansion from Clayton to Rattone in 2000s under Governor Richardson. Also, the city will gain an additional voice to work with the NMDOT and the New Mexico Legislature to solve the future connectivity issues in Rattone, as we try to bring two future interstates together, and then number three, the city will gain an organization that is working hard to find and secure state and federal funding to build out a future Interstate Highway 27, which includes the critical and important junction in Rattone, New Mexico. My recommendation is for approval of, to submit the application. One of the, thank Commissioners, they have asked you to name a person that would sit on the Ports to Plains Board. That's something that we can discuss here at the meeting.
Alrighty. Any questions, comments? Do we need to have that appointment before we do the application?
Not necessarily. If you all want to think about that, we can come back with that name at a, at our next meeting, or when you think it's timely, but I don't know that we have to decide that tonight. It would be somebody that would attend meetings, a lot of those meetings are, are a long way throughout Texas, it, you know, Colorado is involved, actually, throughout the corridor to the Canada border, so it, there's, there would be some travel involved for the, the board member that would represent Rattone. I'd say a lot of them are in Texas, but they go as far north as North Dakota occasionally, so.
I think that's something I'd like to maybe discuss when we're all here present physically, and we have time to think about it right now.
I'm sorry, Duffy Hinkle has also asked me to bring up that they are planning a Washington, DC fly-in to advocate again with Congress, and upon your acceptance, Rattone would be invited to attend that event.
Is this something where we need to be...
This is Lindy, Commissioner Schuster. I would happily consider it, and I would also be happy to, you know, wait to make the final decision on that, but I would, I will happily consider it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protam. Wishes of board, Commissioner.
My question is, it needs to be a Commissioner that serves on that, that position, cannot be city staff, is that...
It, it could be either one, Commissioner.
Okay. It does, on the application, it does have that we designate somebody on there. I'm unsure we could do it later, but I'm good to wait, I'm good to...
Wait till they're all here.
Okay. But we can still vote to approve the membership application, correct?
Yep.
Basically, your action would authorize the, the dues amount that we said that would go, we would go to the general fund for that. Once again, let me find that amount, $3,685 and 1 penny.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 Ports to Plains Alliance Annual Membership Dues and Application with stipulation that we will be deciding the designated member at our next meeting?
Okay.
Sounds good.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the membership dues application. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate act on resolution 2022-58, court records destruction. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, if I could go back to the city clerk, Michael Ann Antinucci, I think she's got the right information for you here.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we do have a resolution requesting to allow the destruction of certain records belonging to the municipal court. I've also included in the packet the list and the letter prepared by Christine Piancino, the court clerk, and then just the few pages that apply to the records retention schedule that we've previously adopted, and really what the life of the various records are. So, I believe that her request complies with the records retention schedule. I think we've also noted that there's certain DWI criminal case files or other records that must be kept by statute that would not be destroyed, and the method used would be And then upon, once they've been destroyed, we would actually formally execute a certificate of destruction to keep in our files, and then that way, later on, a record was to be requested, maybe through like the IPR process, we would have records showing the date that it was actually destroyed and that it was no longer in our possession.
Any questions, comments for Michael and for Mr. Barry?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-58, court records destruction.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-58, court records destruction. Is there any further discussion?
Just wanted to mention that hopefully, I know Desiree actually attended the clerk's certification classes a couple of weeks ago, and so it was a week-long certi, towards her certification, so she's getting real close, but I believe records destruction was something that they talked about, and so as she moves towards getting her certification, you know, I think her and I'll work on actually coming up with a plan, because we have probably 40 years' worth of records that we probably need to go through. Some are real easy to identify, a lot of our records are permanent, but I think we could probably tackle the easy ones first, but we're kind of just busting at the seams with boxes and running out of storage space, so I know we've talked about maybe getting another building or something like that, but I think if we could thin out a lot of the records that we don't necessarily need to keep, that would make a lot more room for the, the records that we do, do want to keep, so we could get a little bit more organized and make it easier to find things.
Yeah, for sure.
So, I think that's definitely gonna be one of our goals.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, City Manager Report. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, in the last, in the recent days, I've participated in several meetings with the purpose of discussing the implementation of the affordable housing strategy. These meetings included Monica Beta from North Central, staff from Williford Consulting Services, and then staff from the city of Rattone, Town of Springer, Village of Simron, and Colfax County. The consultants mentioned from Williford Consulting came to Rattone, and they visited the other cities as well with the purpose of evaluating existing assets in the housing area, especially affordable housing, and provide technical assistance and facilitation with those strategies. The affordable housing strategy is a little different in each Colfax County community. Certainly, Rattone is fairly unique in that, so we're working with, with North Central and with their consultants to move that goal along. Also, I have been invited to make a presentation at a New Mexico Main Street virtual roundtable discussion that they are calling regulatory tools to enforce the repair of vacant and deteriorated buildings. There's generally a lot of interest in the Rattone vacant building ordinance and the impact that that's had, and because Rattone, you know, started with an extensive issue in regard to vacant buildings, we have, are getting a lot of questions on how it works, how to implement such thing, and what the results have been, so I'll participate in that conference. I met on a related item, myself and staff from the city met with New Mexico Environment Department staff and consultants for New Mexico Main Street on November 2nd with the purpose of discussing Rattone's brownfield program and funding requests to the New Mexico Environment Department. We do anticipate that we'll get additional funding through our request when that funding becomes available to the state, to this federal money they're waiting on, but they came to see what, what we were doing and where we're going with the program. Very good meeting, we spent a couple hours in Rattone. I would note that in addition, we, the meeting was attended by Scott Nighting Gale. He is from a brownfield program at Kansas State University, and he's helping us to review our application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Speaking of that application for funding request, that would be an assessment to grant request. We are in the final stages of putting that request together, and we would anticipate uploading to the, and submitting that to the federal government, grants.gov, later this week. Then it'll be some time until we... Then it'll be some time until we hear back about our request. I do plan to attend the Colfax County Commission meeting on November 15th to discuss our photovoltaic project with the County Commission. I will make a request for donation of property on the La Mesa Airfield site from Colfax County, who is the owner of that tract. We're gonna request 10 acres out of the 214 acres that that property consists of. So, we'll talk about that. Finally, Mayor, I would make the public aware of the paving improvements we've talked about before on West Colfax Avenue. We plan to complete those, those paving improvements this Friday and Saturday. Both days, West Colfax will generally be closed. We would urge traffic to avoid West Colfax. And we're talking about Colfax Avenue from Second Street going west to the end, which is at the railroad property. It's a block from Brilliant, so from Second Street to Brilliant and beyond, that will be closed both days. That's this Friday and Saturday. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Barry.
Good job.
Is there anything from any other Commissioners? Commissioner Chaver, Commissioner Jaco.
None here.
Commissioner Chaver, Mayor Frotem, any comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good as well. With that, this meeting is adjourned.